Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insight. We thank you for this day. Protect us as we each travel back home. In your son's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
So we pledge allegiance to the family. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which your saints, one nation, under God, in the best of all, is the very end of this world. Thank you.
We now have reading and approval of previous minutes. I move that we dispense with the writing, notes, and go by what we receive by email. Thing?
Is there a second?
First, we love-
Discussion.
Discussion. Uh, it's related to members of Thursday last time, Harold was left off of the speaker. Oh, thank you, I'll correct that.
Should we let Harold speak for himself on that?
Were you here last time? I will add the same.
All right, with that amendment, is the, uh, everything in order with the amendments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have one whole business, um, and this is a reason for special uses. All of the testimony, public record was established at our last meeting, and so there will be no further comment on either side of this. Charles?
Yes, yes. You have two different voices?
Totally been, yep.
Let me start by saying that I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to, to all religious testimony. In order that this information be made a part of the record, it shall be available for the board of commissioners to review. Also, all future developments shall comply with all applicable codes to ensure that all residential structures on, on the property meets safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of surrounding residents.
Yep.
Uh, first case before you is old business, conditional use. It's referenced as 191050. Advocate is Karen Smith. Uh, the location of the property is, uh, 834 Worthy Crossroads. Uh, the total acreage is 20. The site is referenced as parcel 065010. Uh, the intent is to host fall and spring concert series. Pretty much, uh, the applicant wanted to amend what was already previously approved. Uh, you'll see there the location map of the property. Click.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good. That is the aerial view.
Okay.
And, uh, this, this area is, um, identified, uh, the best suburban residential character area, um, that you'll find in our comprehensive plan. Uh, the applicant, Karen Smith, currently operates under an approved conditional use permit that allows small-scale events and educational activities on her 20-acre agricultural property identified as parcel 065010. The conditional use includes farm-based programs, limited special events, and, uh, specific, uh, previously approved activities such as live music during Jeep Fest. So what I'm doing in this staff report is just outlining first what was approved. So the current conditions are cooking and related classes, uh, that will be held on Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with a maximum of 12 participants, uh, conducted twice a month. The other condition was approved was Sunset Nova Sessions, uh, that will, that will take place on Saturdays from 5:30 to 6:45 p.m. with a maximum of 20 attendees, held once a month. Uh, the other farm tours with, will be organized no more than three times per week between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., 5:00 p.m. But then you'll see, uh, also the original approval, uh, also specify these conditions. Uh, one Jeep Fest will feature an off-site area, uh, for attendees to engage with the community and experience the farm with all activities, including live music, uh, permitted until 10:00 p.m. Let me see if I can.
Sorry.
Then you'll see later on in the report, all other previously outlined conditions remain in effect and unchanged. Next page. Uh, the original proposed new condition, which caused the table from the last meeting, was for a fall and spring concert series featuring three concerts each season, uh, with music concluding by 10:00 p.m. Uh, and of course, you know that, uh, this application was tabled, uh, last month. So the updated staff recommendation, uh, after further reviews, staff recommends approval of a modified condition that reflects the applicant's request to redistribute, not to increase, uh, the total number of previously approved concerts. Uh, the applicant does not seek additional events beyond what was originally planned when vintage market days were active. And what we mean by that is, as of now, uh, we were informed by the applicant that vintage market days no longer exist. Uh, the recommended revised concert condition is as follows. A spring concert series consisting of two concerts with music ending by 9 o'clock. Uh, that was a condition, uh, that she, uh, that the applicant was trying to compromise on, uh, in the previous meeting. Uh, also with a fall concert series consisting of two concerts with music also ending by 9 o'clock instead of 10. Uh, this adjustment reflects a redistribution of previously approved concert opportunities and earlier ending time, and does not expand the number of allowed concert events. So what I mean there, what the staff means there is, under the vintage market days, uh, that was going to be a three to four night, uh, event, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the applicant, correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, what she is, uh, requesting is to spread that differently, where you'll have the two concerts in the spring, two concerts in the fall. Okay, now I thought here, uh, this was an issue that was brought up in our last, uh, month, uh, meeting. Noise ordinance clarification. Uh, staff would like to clarify the following for the record. Pickens County currently has no plans to amend or adopt a noise ordinance. Therefore, considerations regarding a noise ordinance do not impact the evaluation of this request. Uh, the applicant has prior approval for live music as part of Jeep Fest and related venue operations. As a result, the con, the continuation of live concerts under the revised schedule is consistent with the previously approved uses. Uh, staff therefore recommends approval of the updated condition, which allows for two concerts in spring and two in the fall, with all music concluding by 9:00 p.m. Uh, this recommendation maintains all existing conditions and aligns with the applicant's clarified intent. It does not increase the total number of concerts, uh, beyond those that were earlier permitted, and ensures compatibility with the surrounding agricultural and rural charact- characterices as provided in our, our comprehensive plan.
Okay. Any questions for Charles? Show the board. As I mentioned, we're not be taking any, uh, small post-it comments because of record was established at the last meeting. So. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to accept, uh, to approve what the, uh, qualifications as stated.
I second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Yes, thank you. All right, we'll close that hearing and open a new hearing on RZ 191052. Charles?
Yes, uh, this case is referenced.
It's okay.
This case is referenced as, uh, RZ 191052. The applicant is Daniel Barrett. Uh, the location of the property is 1750 Talking Rock Road. Uh, the request, his zoning request is from AG, which is agricultural, to RR, which is rural residential. Uh, the total area of the property is 1.5 acres of a 19-acre tract. Uh, the parcel is referenced or identified as 030A101. Uh, the intent of this zoning request is to sell the home, uh, that's currently on, uh, this, this property. Uh, to sell the home, uh, and leave it with 1.5 acre tract. You'll find there the, uh, location map showing you the site and the surrounding area. You also have the aerial map. And that is the proposed, uh, survey. Uh, should, watch him pass, here. Should this, should this, uh, request, uh, get approval, then the staff would approve this, uh, this submitted, uh, survey accordingly. Yeah, the site is located within the suburban residential area, uh, which, which allows, which allows for, uh, connectivity between subdivisions and the existing road network in that area. Uh, staff's recommendation, uh, the site is adjacent to rural residential, property to the east, and is surrounded by RR zoning to the south and in the surrounding area. Given the location of the existing house on the 19-acre tract, separating, separating out 1.5 acres is a suitable solution, allowing the remainder of the land to remain designated as agricultural. Located within the suburban residential character area, uh, this area is intended to serve as an extension of the larger Jasper community. However, the site and its immediate, and its immediate surroundings, uh, still maintain the rural atmosphere typical of certain areas in Pickens County, Pickens County. While it may not completely align with the future vision for this locality, it is ordered by uses that, that support, uh, rural and low, uh, density development. Uh, staff therefore recommends approval of the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of Pickens County, uh, Pickens County, Georgia, to rezonate a 1.5 acre portion of a 19-acre tract from AG to RR, rural residential. Uh, this tract is currently identified, uh, as parcel 030A, for the record, 101. Uh, the rezoning would enable the applicant again to sell, uh, the portion of the property that contains the existing, existing house. Any questions?
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Barrett?
Daniel's not here today, but Jeff Rock is representing.
Come forward, please. Name, rank, address.
Jeffrey Rock. Um, I live at 345 John Lane, apartment 113th, another apartment, uh, work for Mr. Barrett, and, um, yeah, to do, come on his behalf, and I keep, I'll be here.
So good.
Yes.
All right. Anything to add to the, Charles?
Uh, we, we've talked about this extensively with staff, man, heard their recommendations on how we should proceed. Uh, Mr. Barrett's just looking to take this, the house that he currently lives in, uh, he's building another house here in Pickens County, and would like to sell this house, uh, separating it from, he owns the, uh, surrounding land as well.
Is that where he's going to build his new house, or?
No, his new house is on Bowling Farm Road.
Okay. Still change. Any questions? For Mr. Barrett? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to, because we just, to move to approve of the staff recommendation.
We need public comment or we can, if you didn't have.
No one signed up. Was anybody that wanted to speak regarding this, this didn't sign up?
Yep.
Thank you, Phil. Those, those responsibilities to keep me straight. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close that hearing and open a new hearing on RZ 191059. Charles?
I've been waiting a month to, uh, say I'll, uh, name the applicant. This, easy money ventures LLC. Uh, the case is referenced as 191059. A location of the property is 187 Old Jones Mountain Road. Uh, the applicant is requesting rezoning from, uh, AG to ER, which is estate residential. Uh, the total acreage is 66.55. Uh, the parcel is identified as 010029. The intent is to complete a previously planned, uh, development. And after I give my, uh, staff recommendation, the applicant is here to provide further details. Uh, you see there the location map? For the property and, uh, aerial view. The site is located, uh, within the rural residential, uh, character area, uh, and that, and the site, uh, does meet, uh, the vision, um, uh, that, uh, that identifies it with this particular character area as, as provided in our comprehensive language Staff's recommendation is as follows. Uh, the site was initially planned as a phase development project that originated in 2002. Uh, the first phase covered approximately 30 acres and resulted in the creation of six lots, uh, zone for rural residential. Uh, this subdivision, which, uh, was named at, at the time Laurel Creek, uh, was approved and officially recorded during the original development process. Uh, the current rezoning focuses on the remaining 66.55 acre parcel, part of the larger 94-acre tract subdivided in 2006. Uh, the original plans anticipated development in two phases, phases, with the access road for phase two constructed prior to 2005. Uh, since the subdivision in 2006, uh, the parcel has changed hands multiple times. This is probably due to, uh, the recession of 2008, 2009, of course, COVID, um, including also instances of, of foreclosures. Uh, the area is designated as a rural residential character area in the comprehensive plan that's mentioned earlier, which emphasizes preserving open space and maintaining a low density, uh, rural environment. Uh, the staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of Pickens County, Georgia, to rezonate the property identified as parcel 010029 from agriculture AG to estate residential ER. The applicant, Easy Money Ventures LLC, represented by David Shouse, plans to develop the 66.55 acre site in accordance with the original subdivision plans. Uh, the development will include extending county water service and installing fire hydrants to ensure adequate infrastructure and, uh, maintain community safety and mobility. If I might add, uh, the applicant has met with our staff, when I say staff, uh, not just the planning development, also met with our public works, uh, our fire folks, um, our, uh, Philip, uh, who's the director of our water department, and also our environmental and health representatives. Uh, based on staff findings, this development is not anticipated, uh, to place any financial burden on the county for infrastructure improvements. Uh, given these considerations, rezoning to estate residential aligns with community development goals and support, and supports responsible growth in Pickens County.
Any questions? Charles, Mr. Shouse? Little follow-up, please, sir. Name, address?
David Shouse, Haiti, Yorkshire, New York. I'm the manager, member of Easy Money. Uh, there's nothing easy about this project. There's a leftover LLC that the FAA wouldn't let me use for the plane.
How did you come up with the name Easy Money?
I was doing it for the plane, and then FAA wouldn't let me have it because some famous boxer has it. Um, he, he has his plane registered that way, so they wouldn't let me have it, so it was a leftover LLC I haven't paid for for years.
Interesting.
Um, so when we went to buy the property, I just said, well, you know, and to your side of. Um, one thing, Charles, for working with him, he's been claiming, um, I actually met with the county twice, with all departments at the roundtable, which is highly helpful. Um, I was approached with this land, uh, by the previous owner, because I do own it now. Uh, she had, however, obtained, and I'm not certain through all of the, somehow she got back from foreclosures and deed swaps and so on and so forth. Um, it was originally 60, uh, 90 something acres. The first phase we found was approved by the county, signed off by all departments, and filed at the courthouse. Uh, the second phase, which is what I bought, was, we found bits and pieces that had been, for instance, environmental had signed off. Um, this department signed off, but we could never find the whole thing and actually completely approved and, uh, signed off on. However, just putting, uh, pieces together, I don't think the road was built without the county knowing about it, and especially to the standards it was built. Um, what are those standards? We, so, we had, um, the road department has actually went to the site. Um, he, he, uh, measured the roads, uh, for the widths, um, the grades for the fire trucks. Um, and then we're also, one thing I want to mention, I was going to jump to it, um, but we are doing it as built on it to make sure that the survey and plans that are being given to you are exactly what's out there, that, um, goes all the way to the piping under the roads, everything that's there is there. The other thing we're doing, uh, we're not sure back in the early 2000s, you know, two decades ago, uh, what soil requirements were. So after the, the lots are actually marked this time, uh, we are doing full foot test on all 17 lots that are proposed to make sure that they are actually built on them. Um, driveways will be put even on a flat part of the road, or we'll have to have a flat part for the fire truck to pull into. Things like that is all what feedback we got from the county when we sat down with them. Um, but, uh, so we met twice with the county, uh, went over everything that was there. We decided to keep the road private due to there may be some things that, for their engineer and in other things that we would have to do to get the county to take those roads over, and we don't want to burden the taxpayers with something that was done two decades ago. Um, and I'm sure you, my legal team will have covenants and memberships and all that for the 17 acres that are, is there. Uh, we decided at the end, there, this property was, as, um, Charles said, is zoned ag right now. Other developers were looking at it, thinking they could split it and go RR and get more lots out of it. We, I chose not to do that, um, to go to ER. The three-plus acres, I think the smallest lot in there, as proposed, was 3.02 acres, so I'm not trying to do anything differently than what was originally proposed. Um, ours, the plan does include extending county water from Jones Mountain Road, and it's at our expense. Um, one thing that was noted, current courts doing our engineering, uh, not a Calhoun, uh, matter of fact, CCW, or whatever the water, the environmental, whatever, came back tonight, uh, with two revisions, everything else that they've approved to send back to the county. Um, one thing we are doing is, um, and I may not have some of these numbers right, but we're supposed to have 20 PSI fire hydrants. Um, and we had it actually engineered to give the pressure, the minimum pressure at the hydrants, actually at the houses because of the elevation. So instead of doing six-inch pipe, we're actually going to do eight-inch pipe to a certain point. Um, so there's a lot of things that we're doing to, uh, I believe, uh, and the fire marshal would be able to tell you more, uh, trying to keep that ass, so I think at four or something in Talking Rock, and this really helps, helps in it with that while I was doing this project. Um, we did do our engineering already on water. We're fine, we don't need pumps, it's all gravity, we're good to go there. Um, electric services will be, uh, undermanned by Anne McQuillan, MC. Uh, one thing I will say about, uh, the only thing, feedback I got from a neighbor was about street lighting. Um, they, evidently they can see the public's glowing or something now from up there. Um, we have agreed if we do, uh, I don't disagree, we put it right. If we do do street lighting, it'll be motion-based, and it'll only be for, you know, while cars going through or something, um, because Anne McQuillan was offering that just to put the posts and things up. Um, but I did have one neighbor that did not like the street lights, and I, I had no objection, not good with that. Um, new surveys, like I said, being done. Um, we're going to do all the soil tests, um, and we're not creating any additional lots. Plan on building 850 and up, and that's for the home, um, this time through lot value. So we're going to be somewhere maybe 1 million, maybe just about, something like that. Uh, no minimum square footage, uh, but we will have strict, uh, architectural, uh, guidelines, things like that. No more cons, obviously, no one's going to buy it kind of like.
Are you going to build all the houses here?
Probably so, on this one. I, I kind of want this to be like an old master community.
So what does 800,000 hit you in square footage, this digging thing?
Well, it depends on the finishes. If you're going to Amazon or you're going to, you know.
But we, David Shouse would do it.
Probably 2,500, 3,000 finish, something like that. Probably 200, 225 a foot, something like that, with the tight finishes, coffered ceilings, that kind of stuff.
Hard to get it under $300 to put.
It's hard to fill a truck up for 100, 300 bucks, so 300 put on. So, um, and that's pretty much it. Like I said, um, I came to the county, I, I wasn't asking them, I really asked them how we could get this done and what made sense, and having really, and through, you know, feedback with each other, I, I think we got a piece of property that has been sitting there for two decades that's ready to, you know, bear fruit.
So there's no plan to pave the roads?
The road already is paved.
Oh.
The, all the, the roads paved, um, the only thing that the county asked us to do differently was go fire hydrants every 750, um, which I've agreed to, um, but no, the roads paved, and it's in marvelous. There's one spot in the cul-de-sac, um, which I believe we were going to be, why, is very minimal, like a foot or off. There's one, uh, part in the cul-de-sac that's got some cracking that we will address when an engineer, but the roads, I can't believe, it's talking about 20 years old.
Those hadn't been driven on yet.
I guess not. Um, there's some hunks, nothing.
So still going to be a private road?
Yes, sir.
Anybody to cover? You're going to have covenants tied to the land and the lots that will ensure cooperation between people that live there in terms of road basis.
Yes, sir. Well, they called, actually attorney called me too today, um, and we're looking at, I think it was originally, it was going to be the county road, because often you look at the survey, it shows a 60-foot right-of-way. Um, we don't need that, we're probably going to take that. I think, uh, Phillip's requiring, I believe it was 10 foot on the shoulders for the, for the water easement. I think we'll do, probably wind up around 40 or so, uh, whatever makes sense, and that, that right-of-way will also be maintained by the HOA. So it, it will be kept in a neat manner, you know, when you come in there. And this, and at this point, it's not the, um, Charles said, I think we could gain if we wanted to, but at this point, if we're not planning on having, yeah, just.
Game, so Matt, the key bond is votes, uh?
Yes.
Not very cheap. Questions? On the board?
How many houses you going to have in all?
17, sir.
60 acres?
Yes, sir. The smallest lot's three, but I, I believe the majority of them's, you know, closer over five, that's why I went down, but yeah. I would have wanted to say if I could have, if there wasn't, I think maybe three of them that kind of prevented me doing that. And then, kind of look at the ag, it kind of, if you're selling estate homes, the ag can be detrimental to the advertising, so.
Do the bankers like it better?
Uh, I don't know about that. I don't know what they like anymore.
Curious questions? Yes?
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Sir, any public comments on this?
Nope.
Page?
Paul's on top of here. We did have one person sign up. Steve Cretchen? Anything to comment?
This wasn't one of my questions, but I do have a question about the, I was, make sure, make sure that I wasn't misled, or that I was misunderstanding, I shouldn't say misled. The 30 acres was not part of the 66 that you bought?
No, sir.
Okay, so the 30 acres is what was approved in the past for the Laurel Creek suburb?
It was approved, platted, and dated. For transparency, I do own lot five of that original.
Which is right at the front.
Yes, sir, I'm Jones Mountain.
Yeah, that's, well, I think, well, for some, probably, I'm not mistaken.
I, I have no clue.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So the 66.5, which is really, is what we're at here.
Right.
See, I was under the impression from talking that the whole piece had been previously done, and this is more my- and this is more of a formality, and that's not necessarily the case. The other question I have is the gravel road coming in off of the paint road. Is that what you were referring to, like the easement?
Direct those to us, Steve.
Sir?
Direct those questions to us.
I'm sorry. I knew, I answered. What are you referring to? The, is that, is that what you're referring to as far as the gravel road coming off of, of, Burn Mountain Road or Yukon Road there to the asphalt? Because that's gravel all the way down to that.
Exactly.
And true. Oh, I believe that's Old Jones Mountain Road that comes off Jones Mountain Road. It is gravel now. And just a little bit more, there's only a four-inch line going up that line, road right now to the gun club. And we're going to change that completely out of our expense. And we also, there was nothing completely agreed to, but I talked to the road department in those meetings, that I'm not opposed to chipping in to upgrade that road, whether it be chipping tar or whatever as a county. Obviously, we put it back in the condition it was in. And then again, transparency, I also own the lot on Jones Mountain Road.
Right down the corner where the trailer is?
I don't own the trailer, but the DS two Agma lot, that kind of goes, I own that as well. So we're not going to be doing anything.
Yeah, so it actually would benefit you if we took care of it.
Probably so.
And that was my first question on that. And I want you to understand, I don't. Representative, it's fortunate, it's not, we're not necessarily opposed to you. You've only built, since this is America, and you should be able to buy something to build houses on. But we do want the board to understand that we've been through this as far as noise. That is a gun club. And there's a lot of noise, and it's six and a half days a week. So, yeah, we want to be good neighbors, but we don't want to have problems.
So we had that discussion.
Yeah.
So maybe you should offer special consideration to people that buy the lots to join the junk?
That's, that's what I was saying.
I'm buying a lifetime membership.
We just really want to get on record, mate. We're not necessarily opposed to this.
You just want to make sure everybody.
We want to make sure everybody's on the same page. We want to be good neighbors, but we've been down this road before. And I don't want to go down that, yeah, it's needed, just to have a order.
I've been up there fifteen, twenty times, and I won't kid you not, even, I think, Sloman, we've never heard a gunshot over there. I don't know how. I heard you shot shooting. That's great. But they're large lots. I don't think it's a problem. And then the gravel road, I think Clayton was talking, was, I think you thought that the road now is gravel.
I did, yeah.
He was talking about lava.
And that's what I learned, and that's why I want to make sure of what we're, because we're going to have fun to do more trapping. But I think that's a county.
It is county.
And then that's what I asked for.
Steve, for the record, you didn't give me your address.
I'm sorry. I lived.
Two forty-six Campbell Wood River.
Yes. Your concerns have been appropriately noted. Was anyone else that wanted to speak regarding the, either? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as recommended.
We have a motion to approve and recommended by the staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Charles, thanks, sir. All right, we'll close that hearing. You will open a hearing on RZ 191064. Charles?
Yes, this, this last application is referenced as RZ dash one nine one zero six four. The applicant, the applicants are Hannah and Craig Jones on behalf of Scott Prince. The location of the property is 11025 Highway Fifty-three West. The request is to rezon said property from AG to RR. The total area of the tract is eight point sixty acres. The property is identified as parcel number zero three seven zero four seven. The intent is to create a buildable lot. You see there the location map and the surrounding properties, this is the area view of the property, the surrounding area. This is the potential survey split, if approved. And if you can go back, Jerry, to the previous slide. And we've noticed, that I believe I, I think I mentioned this in the staff report. We did notice in our Q public tax records, there's a huge difference between acreage, acreage that's shown on the Q public to what was, what is shown in the survey. So this survey is the correct, uh, correct acreage of the site.
So it went from eight point six.
Eight. Yes.
I could let happen, Joe.
Maybe the. You display that to us. What, next slide? The, the property, the property is, is identified as a rural residential character area as identified in our comprehensive plan. And the recommendation is as, as follows. The subject property encompasses approximately eight point sixty acres, which does not permit the applicants to subdivide into two lots for an additional single-family dwelling under the current AG zoning designation. As the minimum lot size, according to our code of orgases, chapter sixty-seven, is for AG to have a minimum of ten acres. To facilitate the construction of two single-family dwellings, a rezon from AG to rural rural is proposed, thereby satisfying the minimum zoning requirements. And as mentioned earlier, inconsistency in the tax records, which we will fix, reflects the total acreage as only three point sixty acres. However, a boundary survey has been conducted. You found that attached in this presentation. It confirms that the actual acreage of the tract is actually eight point sixty acres. The site is designated within a rural residential character area in our comprehensive plan, as mentioned earlier, which prioritizes the preservation of open space and the maintenance of a low-density rural environment. While the surrounding area primarily features rural residential and AG zonies, there are also isolated highway business zone lots in nearby vicinity. The proposed rezoning to the rural residential is consistent with the planning objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Based on the considerations above, staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of Pickens County, Georgia, to rural residential. The proposed rezon of parcel identified as zero three seven zero four seven from agricultural to rural residential will allow for the establishment of an additional buildable lot, which would make, will go from one to two lots, thereby aligning with both zoning requirements and community planning goals.
Any questions? So I presume Mr. Dobbs is in the where, in the made aware office. This graphic is.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
I see some nods going. Then he's right next door.
Yes.
So I've got, Hannah and Craig Jones on behalf of CFRS. Don't fall. Name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Craig Jones, currently residing at three seventy-two Eat Road in Eight.
George Sacks?
I really don't have a whole lot more to say, so I think Charles has pretty much handled it as we've talked many times, and we have talked with Mr. Dobbs as well. He's, he's a neighbor. So, yeah, we talked to him, and kind of all started from just a conversation of how many acres they had, and we started walking it, and I'm like, this is a little bit more than three. So the plan was to break some off for my wife, his daughter, and I, and update that charge.
Let it get. Questions from the commission? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Diane, but this chick's. Hearing none. I'll call for a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the recommendations presented.
There are a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there further discussions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. We have one item being voted on the twenty twenty-six calendar. Charles has gotten, I know, Charles, that you highlighted October the thirteenth.
Actually, my operations coordinator did that. I have her explain why you don't mind this.
So we have the only, the only second Monday of the month falls on a Tuesday in October, falls on October. So it is the only one that will not meet because of the holidays. So if you will approve that for Tuesday, October thirteenth, we can maintain our second Monday of the month dates for the rest of twenty twenty-six. Now, this would be a time to discuss if you're wanting to change the time from five thirty to whenever you choose.
I think five thirty works, but that's still a study. Check, good. We're maintaining five thirty. Is it, according to discussion, the questions about meeting schedule? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
I've got a question. Does this, this, have we, we're typically a Monday meeting?
Yes.
And didn't we have issues with changing a date?
And that, that's why we're going over this now. Right, yes. I believe that what is, was it Veterans Day?
It was October. It's Columbus Day.
Columbus Day, well, but even in those circumstances, as long as we advertise it according to what the law gives us, the authority to do, we can do that. But what we're trying to do is kind of try to preempt any of that happening in twenty twenty-six. That's why we draw this toward.
That's the only one that falls on a government holiday.
Same. Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Motion, we approve the planning schedules of twenty-six as presented. With the five, five thirty start time? Correct. Five thirty start time. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, public comments? I think you have a public left. Anybody want to comment? Or comments?
I have a comment, and that is, I hope that everybody got the one questions. And we're going to look forward to twenty twenty-six. And I thank you for this service, this group, this last year, and the other four for twenty twenty-six.
Sure, I have a comment. As always, it's a pleasure to work with you, to serve the board. I'm looking forward to next year. We're going to have some more training coming up. But I think there's still a few that needs to get a little refresher. And so we'll talk about that, we'll talk about that next year.
Thank you.
Very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Sergeant? All in favor? Right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's found that suffer, so.
Picture. Who's that?
Oh, I need to jump out. I just wanted to say, because I, at the last meeting, I was in opposition to your first one that you mentioned, Ms. Smith. And I just wanted to say thank you, guys. I think that's a great compromise. So, I just want to say thank you for your job well done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.